Let's call the meeting to order. Yes, we need to do a roll call.
Here.
Here. Yes.
Yes. Okay, are there any public comments? And so the first item on the agenda is the Atherton Channel District Overview.
Before that, Mr. Mayor, we have to report out of closed session.
Oh, sorry. On the agenda, report out of closed session.
Thank you, Mayor DeGolia. The council did meet in closed session today. There was no public comment prior to adjourning. And we met on a claim filed by Mr. Gerard Miles against the town and the council provided me with direction.
Okay, thank you. So, the Atherton Channel District Overview.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Members of the council appreciate the opportunity to provide a a brief overview of the Atherton Channel District. You have the staff report in front of you. And in it, there is an exhibit that shows the outline of the Atherton Channel District in relation to the town. Want to note that the district was originally formed in nineteen fifty-eight as a subsidiary district to the town. Back in those days, assessments were allowed to fluctuate based on need. And with the passage of Prop thirteen, the rates and assessments charged to the district were fixed at that time, and that may have been at a low year when not too much was being constructed by the district, but the assessments on each parcel were set at that time in terms of the percentage of their property value. There are approximately almost twenty-five hundred parcels within the district. About fifty-five percent of those parcels are within the town boundaries. Other jurisdictions that feed into the boundaries of the Atherton Channel District include Woodside, Menlo Park, and some unincorporated county parcels. And so, as depicted on the attachment one, you can see the areas in yellow are the unincorporated county. Pink is the area within the town of Atherton, and blue within Menlo Park. And then there's a small piece of Woodside up near Highway two eighty that's in white within the Channel District boundaries. The council's received a couple of presentations in the past outlining the district. It's important to note that based on current requirements, subsidiary districts, if they were to be formed today, need to have a seventy percent within the boundaries of the jurisdiction to be formed as a subsidiary district. And as it currently sits, we're around fifty-five percent in terms of residents within the town. The primary purpose of the Channel District is, was to construct and fund maintenance and repair of the Atherton Channel and the associated drainage system. So with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
The the seventy percent numbers, that's for modifying it or for recreating it or which is the seventy percent.
So if we were to create a just a special district today.
We would need to have seventy percent.
You need to have seventy percent. That kind of dovetails into creating assessments or increasing assessments as well.
And we don't have seventy percent. We have fifty, fifty-four point eight. And then, do you know what the population is of Menlo Park? Versus that's in this district? We don't have seventy percent of that, do we? Because it says, or seventy percent of the population of the registered voters.
Yeah, you say the portions of Menlo Park and unincorporated county are a lot denser than the town parcels.
Yeah, that's up in Sharon Heights, if I remember right.
Yeah.
Okay. And I guess a number of years ago, we had another, we had a flood that was on Bohemus, is that right?
I, I don't recall.
There've been a couple over the past few years. The most recent one was Poli- flooding on Polhemus as it came down.
Right. Bohemus is outside the Channel District, isn't it? It's actually to the north of Atherton Ave.
Wait, I, I didn't understand what you said. What flooded onto Bohemus?
It flooded down the Bohemus right-of-way. And then there's a section of drainage that flows into Bohemus and goes underneath Bohemus, and then hits another culvert and then runs behind on Parker. That is the area that flooded.
That's not part of the Channel District.
It is not, but I was just answering Bill's question. Yeah.
Yeah, the, the area is not part of the Channel District, however, the water came from the channel. And went into the channel, right?
It could have. Some of it could have. It depends on the way the drainage flows, based on the Drainage Master Plan.
But it's important, it didn't come from the Channel District area. I mean, we've got a lot of town that isn't in the Channel District.
I think it may have come from the Channel District area, based on what I've seen and plus, plus, you know, if you look at the original, in the Drainage Master Plan, they showed where all the water was coming from. And, you know, like, just take this, this area here. So if you look at what a hundred-year flood would be, it goes right through Atherton, you know, back both sides of the channel, but it goes all the way over towards the beginning of, of Lloydton Park. That's from here, but that's not in the Channel District. Because the Channel District, according to the map that was drawn back in the fifties, you know, had, had everything stopping here at Fair Oaks. So, you know, I contend that the, the Channel District, I mean, that was good that it was there, and I'm not saying abolish it. But, you know, I'm just saying that I think it's, the way it's drawn today, or was drawn then, based on the contours and things like that, which if you look at, none of the contours go this way. And that way, they all go to the, to the east. Yeah, I don't think.
Atherton Avenue, which actually is the edge of the Channel District, it, it creates a dividing line for water at Atherton Chan- at Atherton Avenue.
I contend it doesn't.
Oh, I know it does. I live on it.
Well.
So, Atherton Avenue, all the water that flows down the north side of Atherton Avenue goes to the north.
Where do you think the water from Clay comes from? Goes to?
Uh, the water from Clay, I know where it goes. It goes right straight to Bohemus.
If you put a level on it, it actually goes down in that.
Bill, I've got a.
It doesn't. It goes down Clay to the back.
I've done, I've done it, Rick, but that's okay. I don't, I don't want to argue about it, but what I do want to say is, is that, I just wanted to understand where we were and, and the, this, this seventy percent building it or changing it, you know, because I think a lot of water that goes in there, if you look at the original map of where water drained, comes from Menlo Park. And where they've done all this brand-new development, yet that's not in the Channel District. Channel District boundaries, for the most part, at least in this part of town, were drawn along Valparaiso, which, by the way, there's no, there's no places, there's no drainage spouts for the water to go anywhere else other than into the channel. If you look at the original map.
George provided me with a couple other maps. One of which shows the flow and seems to support what Rick's saying, that pretty much the water on the north side of Atherton Avenue flows towards Redwood City. And what Bill says, the, the flow from Menlo Park flows into our, our district. I, I have a feeling that the Atherton Channel is, is I have a feeling the Atherton Channel is not at the top of our residents' list of concerns. My question is, should it be? Because I think they're much more concerned with the flooding at Ravenswood and Middlefield Road every time it rains, or numerous other places. So, to me, those are the things that residents care about. Do we have issues with the channel that are, do we have failures pending like we did on Marsh Road allegedly?
So, the, the twenty-fifteen Atherton Drainage District Study identified and divided the various recommended projects into priority categories. Life and property that could be threatened, private property flooding, which are, need to be private property addressed, not town projects. And then inconvenience flooding. Some of the inconvenience flooding that are not life safety issues might be the ones at the corner of Tuscaloosa, Stockbridge, El Camino. They're not life and property threatening unless somebody, you know, in the vehicle spins out or something like that, but that's not going to occur a lot. The channel, upper channel is subject to erosion as the water runs through there. And a few years back, the council actually took a tour of portions of the properties that back up to the Atherton Channel along Walsh. And as the channel meanders, it erodes portions of private property and can get closer to those homes along.
It's not a line.
Pardon me?
It's not concrete lined like.
It is not. That's what we're actually talking about doing to portions of it as one of the major projects.
There are pieces that are, that are lined and have deteriorated as well.
And that's a two and a half million dollars. The one part, two and a half million dollars is in the budget today.
What, what's in the, what's in the budget for the channel right now?
Wait, we'll, we'll get to that when we get to the budget.
Oh, okay.
This is just an overview on the Channel District.
All right.
Okay. And my big question on this is we have fifty-five percent of the properties in the Channel District. Menlo Park has forty-two percent of the properties, and the county has two-point-five percent of the properties. I think Bill asked a very legitimate question that we should be able to answer, which was deals with item double I, which is the number of registered voters that are in the Channel District that are in each of those jurisdictions. We should be able to find that out.
We should be able to get something from the census tracts.
Yeah.
To give us an approximation.
I don't, my guess is what Bill said is probably accurate. We're, we're less dense than Sharon Heights. And, but I don't know that that's going to have any big impact, but, but my big question is if Atherton's general fund is supporting the Channel District and we have fifty-five percent of the properties, we should be talking to Menlo Park about us have, sharing the cost, because they have forty-two percent of the properties.
I agree.
That, I, I mean, the, the, the staff report talks about either disbanding, which is not recommended, the Channel District, or expanding the Channel District to include all of Atherton. I don't know why we would do that. I, I, I do know why we would go to Menlo Park and say, you know, we have a hundred, we have fifty-five percent, you have forty-two percent, we should balance the costs out. And I, and we have some big costs coming. And I'm not interested in bearing those costs without them participating in that. So, we don't have to deal with that issue now, but I think the issue that is relevant is Menlo Park, I, I mean, they've got forty-two percent of the homeowners in this district who are getting flood control at costs, true, that are controlled by Prop thirteen, but, which means that they don't bear the cost. But I, I don't think that burden should fall on Atherton, because we have assumed management, which we wouldn't have been able to assume if this were to have occurred today.
Where'd you get that forty-two percent?
Forty-two percent is one hundred and, one thousand three hundred and fifty-four properties divided by two thousand four hundred and seventy properties.
We didn't just assume management. We have.
That's what I meant.
That's our part. That's our part.
Where'd you get Menlo Park's forty-two?
Oh, Menlo Park's is one thousand twenty, one thousand forty-one properties divided by the total two thousand four hundred and seventy.
Oh, I see, I see, I see. We don't just have management, we have actual responsibility for the channel. It's ours to maintain. There's an easement along there, we're responsible for that. And if we approach, as you know, we've approached other jurisdictions in the past with respect to contributing to some of the flood issues in Atherton. And we send all of our water into Redwood City, they would come to us and ask for the same. In fact, they did. And we capped it at a certain amount for the Bayfront Canal, saying, we're not going to take anymore. So I would not expect that Menlo Park would financially participate as a jurisdiction. But those residents, you could certainly approach with a benefit assessment district as part of trying to assess a cost for improvements in the district. That's just a long drawn-out process and subject to risk for approval.
Yeah, so on the, on the Marsh Road flooding that you referred to. And the problem, the reason it flooded was because the conduit that's in Menlo Park couldn't handle the water that was coming through our channel. Our channel wasn't overflowing, it was being forced to overflow and run over because of the fact that Menlo Park had a smaller box culvert that was running underneath the, or underneath belt, yeah.
That might be county, right there.
Okay, all right.
Under the street, under Marsh Road, where.
Yeah, it cuts across Marsh, Marsh Lane and then goes out. Yeah, it's a box culvert and it's too small to handle the water that we're bringing out.
Right.
And that's what's caused the flooding down that area.
Partially. There were other considerations as well. But in, but into the Marsh Road channel, the properties that, that drain into that channel, in addition to the surface, are all of Lindenwood.
Yeah, Lindenwood has big pipes coming out, dumping in. I agree with that. They're the only people there that have.
Yeah, all of Atherton paid for that improvement.
Yeah, I mean, well, whatever we have, I mean, we've, I, I'm assuming the numbers are accurate. We have one thousand three hundred and fifty-four properties that are draining into the channel.
No, that are in the district.
That are in the district.
That are in the district, but, but I assume that they're draining into the channel.
Yes, that's not the case, and in all cases.
Useful.
There are actually more properties that likely drain into that African channel than are in the district.
Yeah. Well, I know that there's a lot of properties in Menlo Park that, that aren't included in the Channel District that definitely drain in. These are the ones along Alameda that is excluded. There was litigation on that, and there's, I've read articles on it.
But there are other streets that are, like, like my street. I mean, I can tell you the water comes down from El Camino to where my property is, down at Fenwood. And then it goes up to, up to, then it rises up to Middlefield. So I get flooded every time it rains. So you think I'm, I'm draining anywhere? No, I'm not. The only rea- the only way I can do it is to put in my own retention ponds, which I have. And so.
So.
Yeah, I don't, I, I, I can't say that every, I've looked at the contour maps. I can't say that every piece of property here drains. That's where, you know, if we're going to do some additional assessments, you need to, we need to prove to every property owner that, by the way, this is really going to help you, and I don't think we're going to be able to do that. Although, but the other point that, like Bob was bringing up, and as, as, you know, clearly shows on this map, where Menlo Park has been doing all of their development, all that drains into the, the Atherton Channel per the contours. And it was shown in our Drainage Master Plan.
As a last item, I would suggest you provide these two maps to everybody else.
I, I'd like to compare that drainage map to the Atherton Channel, which I'm sure you've done, since you've had it, but I, I couldn't do it that quickly.
Well, yeah, I understand, but it, it, the arrows tell you which way the water moves, so.
And then the contours.
And then, this is very useful. I, I found it incredibly useful, and it'll be very pertinent when we get to drainage issues in, in the budget, which we're not going to do today, but.
Right. But I, I think the political issue is that we have fifty-five percent of the properties, Menlo Park has forty-two percent of the properties in the Channel District. And if Menlo Park wants to take over management of the Channel District, which I don't think they do, it'd be okay with me.
That would be okay with me, too. They, they'll tell us that they have this San Franscuito creep that they have to worry about.
No, I, 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 I'm just saying, I, I don't think that they would want to do that, but I think that they should be responsible for where their residents are flooding, and it, I mean, we're responsible for those residents in Atherton on the north side of Atherton Avenue. We, we manage all of that drainage through Atherton.
Yeah, we do, and, and we are responsible for, again, the Atherton Channel and all the water that runs through there. That's a town responsibility, regardless of where the water comes. It's within our jurisdiction. And if you recall as well, another chart and statistical data that I didn't share, Bob, that's historical, that the council's aware of, is when the Bayfront Canal study was done, there was a lot of data connected to how much water comes into the Atherton Channel and from where it comes. And that answers some of your other questions about how much each jurisdiction contributes percentage-wise to the water that flows down.
Yeah, but Menlo Park absolutely contributed to the Bayfront Canal.
They, they did, but if, if the suggestion is that they should contribute to our maintenance costs beyond what are within their district, they're not going to do that.
Yeah, they were like thirty-two percent. I mean, I don't think, I, I don't know what our obligation is, then, the, the channel, a- as the Channel District Board, we have an obligation, which is to manage the Channel District, and we should find the funds to do that. And so far, the Atherton City Council has been extremely generous to the Channel District by covering its ass in every possible way. I don't know why we should do that.
Well, they, they are you. It's a subsidiary of the town, not a separate district.
Well, I think in the past, we've had the whole town has paid for all drainage issues, no matter where they occurred. And so I think at this point in time, unless we, and I agree, I agree, Menlo Park should contribute thirty-two percent of whatever our costs are. Because if I remember right, that was their portion of the channel.
It was a rather large percentage.
Yeah, okay, so, but in, in lieu of that, I think that, yeah, there are some big numbers. But, you know, we have to be judicious as to which ones we choose, and I think that one that, you know, the one that we put in the budget or targeted for the budget when we looked at the finances a while ago, which are the ones that's up, up the hill, are the right, is the right place to start, and then from there we can move on. But I think the next, the next area that I think that we would like to do, you know, I think when we talk about flooding, no matter where, okay, is these areas that say flood it before we, it even rains. And I've been bringing that up every year when we do the budget, say, what, you know, if you want to do something that's going to be noticed by Atherton people, that's what they're going to be noticed at. Yeah, you know, there's, there's.
Go ahead, Bob.
I agree one hundred percent with the last part, but the earlier statements and Rick's statements about what's fair is probably irrelevant. It's what we can get done. If you can figure out a way we can get some, a fair amount of money from Menlo Park for the water, the cost, that's great, but George seems to think there is no way.
No, we asked them to participate when we realigned the channel. They said no.
Right, so it's.
So it's not going to help us.
It ain't, it's not going to happen.
But it'd be nice if we could.
Well, we got to concentrate on, and we will, I presume, in the budget with the, where we have the highest potential liability, catastrophic failure, that kind of thing.
Yes.
But.
And, and perhaps there, you know, as a, as a political ask, there, there is, there is no harm in, in asking. So if, Mr. Mayor, you want to, you know, yourself and maybe the vice mayor and, and staff set up a meeting with Menlo Park in Woodside to ask them to potentially contribute to CIP projects within the Atherton Channel, it can't hurt to ask.
I mean, it's, it's not really a concern that we ask around maintenance issues, it's around the big capital projects. I don't think Woodside's worth approaching. They, they have less than half a percent. The county has two and a half percent, they're probably worth approaching. And, and maybe, maybe push it through their flood district, since they've created this new.
Now, that was one of the baseses of one shoreline's creation, was eventually that they would be able to region-wide, one, develop a funding source a local agencies could apply to for regional drainage projects like the Atherton Channel improvements, as well as manage some of those projects' implementations, whether they get there or not. Eventually is.
Yeah.
It'd be interesting to know if this, the highest priority failure, does it affect Menlo Park, is my, or just Atherton?
Just Atherton.
Going to get nowhere.
Is Larry still responsible for the flood district now?
Larry's still there?
No.
Len, Len Matter.
Len Matter's executive director.
But we can, we can set up a conversation with, and invite them to the table as well.
Okay. Well, we should ask them. That never hurts to ask.
Right. Don't ask, you don't get.
Okay, any other questions or comments about this matter? Okay. Let's move on to item number five, which is an overview of the pavement management program.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to provide a brief overview of our pavement management program. We says, we use a, a convention to rate our various streets called the Pavement Condition Index. It's something that's used region-wide and beyond that to assess the general condition of pavement. And it's a rating scale that runs from zero to one hundred, zero basically being a completely failed street, and one hundred being a newly paved street. So, we use a pavement management program that was created by MTC to assist jurisdictions in managing pavements, understanding the conditions, et cetera. And within that program, what we're required to do is do a visual assessment of all of our streets on a regular basis. Every, at least every two years for collector's arterials, and at least once every five years on residential local streets. We typically try and do a visual assessment with the assistance of an MTC grant every two years. We've been pretty successful at getting funds to do that. And with that, MTC hires a consultant and they go out and they drive around and take a look at our streets. They input the information into the program. And what the program also does is do kind of a regression, an analysis on projected deterioration over time. So that if today it's a brand-new street, it'll look like this in three years. If you do nothing, it'll look like if something is already have some cracking and nominal failures, it projects kind of how it would deteriorate over time to help with understanding what our pavements generally look like and how quickly they'll deteriorate if we don't maintain them. So, we use that program to give us a general handle on where we are in terms of overall street conditions. Right now, our overall condition is rated at seventy-six, and that's an average of all of our streets, which is pretty good. I think in our goals and objectives, we're targeting a seventy-five rating, and so we're holding pretty steady. We've been lucky that we've been able to stretch the dollars that the council's provided to keep us there. And with, with the, with the ratings go the type of treatment that you would do. And so, in the upper range, if you're in the eighty-five percent, you basically won't do much other than crack ceiling if you need to do that, and as the street starts cracking a bit more, you do crack ceiling. The next level treatment up is a slurry seal, and you know, every year we do, we have a slurry seal project. There's another treatment called the chip seal, which basically is a little more substantive than a slurry seal in which you lay down some road oil, lay down a layer of rock chips, have that get pressed in. You sweep that up after about a week to take all the loose fines, and then you put another slurry coat on top of it. And so that's a little heftier of a treatment. Then you move on to overlays. And we do that every year. Um, and we do that every year as well. Um, and you try and avoid reconstruction, which is basically removing all of the asphalt and some of the sub base material and re, basically rebuilding the road. And that's the most expensive treatment that, that you have. Along the way, we address potholes, um, on a regular basis. We take care of, uh, pavement failures with, um, our street patching project. Um, and we, uh, target a lot of that in terms of, uh, known failures that we have when we drive by, uh, the various potholes that we've patched over the year, as well as, uh, work in preparation of our slurry project. Uh, we'll try and take care of some of those pavement failures before we put that slurry coat on so that, um, the road condition is improved beyond just putting that, that minor surface coat. So though, that's a general overview of the different types of treatment, um, that we have. And a- as I noted, we use the program as a, as a basis to start, but that's followed on by our staff's visual assessment of the streets to take a look and really fine tune which streets we're going to target with the funds that we have. And we generally take the funds that you provide and split it up into those three buckets in terms of, uh, street patching project to take care of those, uh, pavement failures, uh, the slurry seal project, and then our overlay project. And so with that, Bill will answer any questions.
Yeah, so the way I read the staff report, and I'm looking at page two of the staff report, you know, you had your, you have your asymptotic curve, I guess it's not asymptotic, but, one over X, minus one curve. And, uh, and that, you know, it goes through, hey, we just put down a brand new street, and then it starts to deteriorate, deteriorate over time. So when you run this, um, at what point in time does it trigger and say, hey, you know, we haven't looked at this street for a while? Go out and look at it first off. And secondly, as we get permits for people to go out and do repairs across the streets, whether they be PG&E or the Water District, the Sanitary District, or individual construction companies, do we ratchet up like instead of being, you're in year one, you're now in year five because somebody cut a hole in it?
Okay, so the, the simple, I was going to say, the, the first answer I have for you is, as, as I indicated, we basically have somebody drive all of the streets every couple of years to do an overall assessment.
All the streets.
All, all the streets. And typically what you'll do is if something's been treated in the last couple of years, you don't look at that one because it's just been, just been done. Um, and so with that, that data's collected, it's input into the program, so that visual assessment that's done gives you kind of that overall picture of the different streets. With regards to construction activities there, with our permitting, depending on the type of work, there is a substantial amount of pavement repair that gets done. So for example, um, with the major waterline work that's happening on Stockbridge or that happened in Weyden Park, or the work that PG&E did on, on Middlefield, um, in it, we have a standard in terms of street restoration for trench work that extends beyond the basic trench because you have to deal with the potential of slough failures and other things in the trench. So you want to get, uh, a nice cap to that. In addition to that, with the large linear projects, they do, uh, we require a seal coat. And so you have phase one of the Stockbridge Water Main Project that Cal Water did, um, went from Alameda to Ellis Polgus, uh, believed down to Selby. And so as part of that work, the mitigation for all of that, including all the cross trenching and everything else, was to do the trench repairs and do a, um, a surface coat on the, on the roadway.
Paid for by the water company.
Paid for by the water, paid for by the water company.
But you don't, but you don't change a coefficient in the program, so it will highlight something earlier or not. You just, that would be picked up on a.
Well, I was going to say, we can run analyses within the program to tell us, okay, in, you know, three years, if we don't do anything, what will our streets look like? And so as part of that two-year cycle, there's a variety of reports that are prepared and submitted to MTC that basically says, this is how much deferred maintenance we have. If we do nothing, this is what our street's going to look like in the next five years. And based on the budget we have, this is where we project our roadways to be. So those are all things that we do on that, uh, biannual cycle. Um, and we're happy to share those reports with you if you desire, um, at, at any time.
No, you don't rely just on that. Uh, your previous, uh, Public Works Director, every time you talked to him about streets, it was always, and it wasn't the most recent one, by the way, several back. Yeah, he would just look at the computer thing and say, no, you're not ready. And, and so that was it. Just use the computer run. He had a big computer run on his desk and it looked up, said, nope, you're, you're at seventy-two percent.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to say that. We, we, we do have that, but I mean, a- as you know, when we get complaints about things, we do try and take an actual look at it as well. Um, and the other thing that I do want to mention is, is that we do try and reach out to our neighboring jurisdictions to try and partner with projects. And so one you approved recently was the agreement on Encina Avenue, where we share with, uh, the county. And so we're partnering with them on redoing that street. Um, we've reached out to Menlo Park with regards to Laurel and a couple of other streets as to at least finding out what their timelines are on doing repair work. And there, there are a number of factors. It's not just the computer program. As mentioned, the visual assessment, you mentioned construction projects and, and that kind of thing. And we, we do try and take all of those things into account. Unfortunately, with the amount of construction in town, the duration of those construction projects, it's often difficult to time a project on a street and not have somebody come in right after to put in a utility for a brand new house.
Yeah, do we, do we charge any kind of fees to developers when they're doing a proper, a property that?
At, at one time, I believe the town had a road cut fee, but I think that that was challenged and it was taken away. In lieu of that, what's done is a, um, an assessment after the project's completed to have them repair street, portions of the street that we can attribute to their construction.
So that, that's a patch.
Those would typically be patches. A lot of times they'll, uh, there are several projects that'll at least do, let's say, the half-street frontage in front of their property. In addition to taking care of things that might have been broken off in front of their neighbor's house with their trucks turning around and that kind of thing.
Question, Bob.
You, you verbally broke it into three buckets, street patching, sealing and overlay. But there's really at least six, well, I see six buckets in the staff report. And those six buckets don't, I, I might be able to kind of match them to your three verbal buckets, but they don't match the treatment chart, excellent to very poor. That being said, I don't want to waste a lot of time because that's, you, you figure all that stuff out, but.
Uh, may, maybe I can simplify it. The bottom of that chart, reconstruction is totally rebuilding the street. Thankfully, none of our streets are deteriorated that badly that we have to do that.
Well, you mean the, the poor and very poor, that, that right?
Yeah, that, that very poor segment.
And that, that jives with number six on the, on the previous page.
So the next level up is either an overlay or the grind and overlay.
Right.
Which is our typical, what we call our overlay project.
Right, so.
And so that's going to pick up, um, generally in the forty.
Seal, sorry, seal and crack seal probably.
Well, we have the overlay and then the lighter treatment are those other three, which are typically in that preventative, more preventative maintenance. So if you have a good street, you just want to keep it good. Um, the other caveat I would say is that we typically will do patch and slurry on cul-de-sacs rather than overlays, just because the traffic is really light. And so we're not going to, we don't put in a whole bunch of money to overlay a court that has three people that live on it.
Okay, so I had three questions other than trying to re, you know, ch- figure out those buckets. The most obvious one is, you, you say we don't reconstruct, have to reconstruct very often, but the two worst streets in the city are both in that twenty-five to forty-nine where it says reconstruct. Are they getting reconstructed in this budget cycle?
We are, I think in the staff report, we mentioned a couple of streets that are pretty bad. And those are being, basically, we're going to remove the top layer of asphalt and do some patchwork underneath and then.
Watkins and Walsh, but we're not going to reconstruct.
We're not going to reconstruct.
But they're both in the forties and, and your chart says we reconstruct when they're twenty-five to forty-nine.
Uh, the chart, which one? Okay, you're looking at.
Page three.
Page three, um, and I'm going to point you, I think, uh, we generally follow the, more of the chart on page two. So I apologize for that.
Okay, but you, you understand my.
No, I, I, I understand what you're, if I look at Watkins and I drive, I mean, I drove it regular, every day going to, or in the office. Um, it's not deteriorated to the point that it actually needs to be rebuilt. We're talking about reconstruction.
Probably not really a forty-four.
Well, I think, well, so the, the, but the point, Bob's point is the staff report is wrong, just flat out wrong.
Well, there's reconstruct the surface, which I think is what Robert's talking about, and reconstruct the entire structure.
No, but we're, we're just looking at the information that you provide. There's, there's, there's a table.
Yeah, okay, so the twenty-five to forty-nine, it says reconstruct surface, which is basically taking off that whole top layer.
Grind and overlay.
Grind and overlay, basically. Um, the zero to twenty-four is reconstruct the entire.
I understand. I understand more now that I distinguish those two words. But, so we're doing a grind and overlay on those two streets.
Yes, with patchwork.
Okay, my next question was, do we get a lot of resident complaints about streets and do we log them?
We do get, um, resident complaints about some streets. Uh, generally, they'll start with a pothole issue, um, and we'll go out and, uh, have our street maintenance crews do a minor patch repair where they can if there's an issue. Um, a lot of times, uh, some might be associated with construction, so we'll call the contractors and have them take care of it. Um, and then we'll log those, and if it's something to be put into our street patching project, we will. Um, and we'll keep an eye on the streets if they fall in the overlay area.
So you have a log of all these and, and we're pretty responsive.
We're, we're responsive. We take a look at them and I rely on our, um, senior engineer to, to keep track and make sure that we're, uh, addressing things that we can. Obviously, we're going to get more complaints with regards to please resurface my street than we can afford. And so I'm going to point back to the Vice Mayor's comment about a previous director that may have looked at a chart and said, we're not going to get to you right now. But we'll keep track. And I said, we want to know where we have issues, but our, um, we try and time things with our budget and try and pick things that are.
I understand, but I, I, just from my driving around town, I, I wouldn't think, I mean, I would think you'd be talking about a few complaints a month, not, not so many that you can't go check them out.
No, 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 we check them out. Like I said, we'll check it out and it will patch the road and fill potholes and.
So you don't think we have a lot of disgruntled, uh, residents?
Compared to other places I've worked?
All right.
No.
That's, that's all I wanted to know.
It's a good qualification. Any other questions? Okay, moving on to item number six, which is, uh, review of the capital improvement program.
This is going to be a Robert and Robert show as well. Does Robert have charts? He does not have a PowerPoint presentation, so he's going to skim through the staff report as quickly as he can.
He's tired of doing PowerPoints we don't take time to look at, right?
Right, the, the illustrations, it's okay. I can, I can talk to it. Yes, uh, before you use the review of the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, special revenue internal, internal service funds and capital improvement fund. Uh, just real quick, the special revenue internal service funds include the library fund, our tennis fund, our cops fund, our equipment replacement, workers' comp fund, general liability and employee benefit fund. Also, part of the special revenue fund is a special parcel tax. Um, it is no longer collected by the town. However, we have residuals in the fund we are allocating to CIP drainage and street projects. Uh, the town CIP, the capital improvement program, it's a five-year program. It proposes the project, uh, projects to analyze, repair, improve, counter infrastructure and funding for those projects. As we near the completion of this beautiful town center project, focus will now shift to other projects. Uh, currently, the Holbrook Palmer Parks circulation plan and other park areas will be the new priority along with implementing our neighborhood traffic management plan projects. Uh, the CIP begins to ramp up, um, as funding for the general fund will provide new capacity for our project priorities within the CIP program. Uh, the CIP program, um, will be discussed later in this report. Uh, briefly, the library fund, it's funds that are held in this trust, uh, that the town currently holds one point four six million of the remaining advancement of the Samhain County libraries, uh, funds that were previously held by them. Estimated available funding for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three includes the remaining advancement of library trust funds. Uh, the construction cost for the library is estimated at nineteen point five million. Our expenditures for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, staff has allocated three hundred thousand for the closeout of the project costs uh, during the, the closeout, uh, in these last latter months, um, into the new fiscal year. Uh, remaining expenditure allocations includes two hundred and forty-nine thousand. This is for operations, utilities and maintenance costs. These are amounts that are based on the new building needs and operations of the new campus. Uh, the equipment replacement fund, it's the fund that we use to replace large assets within the town. Uh, expenditures total at two hundred and forty-nine thousand. Yes, sir.
Would, could we ask questions regarding one fund before we move to the next?
Yeah.
Would that be appropriate?
Go for it.
Um, how does that? I'm not worried about the library that much because they got lots of money, but that two hundred and forty-nine, just out of curiosity, how's that comparative? What it costs to maintain the old library?
Uh, the old library, it, it was estimated probably about sixty thousand at that time.
So it's four times.
Yeah, okay.
We won't know for, until after we've experienced the year worth of work. And, and we have to factor in that most of the, uh, heating and cooling is over in the library, so.
Correct, I, I, the electricity cost, um, in that alone, uh, would be about, we were estimating about seventy-five thousand. And those, you know, as we get the experience in this new year, uh, the library is the last one to come online. Uh, I, I think we'll, we'll kind of get a bigger understanding of, of where we stand with that. But I believe that the two hundred and forty-nine thousand is a good starting point. Um, in, in hopes that we can capture our true needs, uh, maintenance costs, uh, the, uh, for landscaping, uh, cleaning as well. Uh, so what, we'll kind of get a true, true picture, but electricity is going to be a big component of that, um, being that they're almost, that not open twenty-four, same like PD, but their use would be Monday through Sundays. So, um, so we'll, we'll, we'll kind of get a, a good feeling for that. Any other questions on the library?
Uh, actually, I have one. So, uh, in the second paragraph, uh, it says the anticipated fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two ending balance in the library fund is one point seven seven million. Uh, so that is the funds that remain available for use.
Correct.
And, and I'm sure that that is net of the advance that they provided to us, right?
That, that, that includes the net of the events.
Right, and then it says funds, uh, the library currently holds one point four six two million of remaining advancement funds. I don't understand that difference.
Uh, that, that's, that, that one point four six is actually cash in the flow. So the, the difference is sitting as accounts payable, so the three hundred and something thousand.
So wait, the one seven seven five is net, net of accounts payable is one four six two?
Right.
I see. Okay, that makes sense. Okay, and then, um, then, uh, it says that the estimated available funding for twenty-two, twenty-three is a million five hundred thousand, which is exactly what we estimated. So that was a pretty good estimate, but if a one point five million is becoming available, um, I assume that that's going to be used to pay uh uh, to pay down the the debt.
Correct.
And in fact, if if that's true, then it looks to me like it's more like two to three years than three to four years.
That that one point five million is what was agreed to as an estimate in the agreement is what the sentence says. It's not what we actually are projecting.
I see. That was what was expected in the loan.
Yes.
That that would be coming, but that's 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 not funding from the loan.
No, that is what the surplus.
That's the surplus.
Is projected to be, but we don't have a realistic.
But we don't know that yet. Okay.
It could come in higher, could be one point six million. Um, but correct, uh, i- if it does come in at these amounts, we could pay it off quicker.
And is that is that based on the four and a half percent that HDL forecast for everything else?
Uh, that's correct, uh, as far as um the the allocation for the 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 library, it's at a different uh rate than the town. Um, but yes, it it's based off of that.
It's all of the same basis.
Correct.
So so they advanced this more than this, I mean, this one, four, five, six.
They advances five point three million and they did this back in um August of two thousand twenty twenty.
Yeah.
They advanced us the funding um to finish the project.
Based on the estimates at that time.
And so they'll pay that out of the fun. They keep they keep all the funds now or is it split? Is there a split?
They'll keep all the funds until we're paid up and then we'll split fifty fifty.
But be aware, when it gets split fifty fifty, the portion that's ours is held by them. It it's ours to use for library purposes, but it they.
We're not going to have it in our bank account.
Correct.
Okay.
Although we'll show it as our as our library fund, but it just we just won't physically hold it. Uh, the one correction in the first paragraph is uh that you had referenced that the excess funds are used uh for utilities, maintenance costs and extended library hours, the extended library hours is no longer applicable.
Right, correct, yeah, sorry. Under the new agreement that they're extended all the way across the board.
Yeah. Okay, I'll move on.
Okay, um, and then the equipment replacement fund, it it's um replacement of our large assets here for the town. Expenditures total about two hundred forty nine thousand, the largest allocation is hundred and seventy five thousand in the PD for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. Um, this charge reflects the replacement about one point five vehicles each year as regular maintenance replacement schedule of our vehicles. Um, PD will replace two vehicles on the fiscal year twenty two, twenty three using this fund and it will also purchase other miscellaneous small equipment of about thirty nine thousand. We will also have a replacement of a a public works vehicle of about forty five thousand. Yes, sir.
So the the but the replacement is is based on either maintenance excessive maintenance costs or excessive mileage that is consistent with what we've approved in the past. Is that not correct?
And the one point five, I assume is just an estimate for what we need to replace based on our experience.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, and we'll replace a a department of uh public works vehicle also out of this fund in the fiscal year twenty two, uh, twenty three. Uh, the uh workers compensation funds that are funded account for workers compensation.
One one question real quick on, I can find it if I stumble through this, but what what's the balance we have in the equipment replacement fund starting the uh new uh budget year?
It's about uh one million, one million forty seven thousand.
All right, thank you.
And um, uh, the workers compensation fund, the staff recommends adjusting the charges to departments for a total of three hundred seventy thousand. Uh, this will reduce the general fund budget expense about a hundred and forty thousand as department allocations will see a subsequent reduction in our next uh general fund uh reiteration reiteration back to the council against expenditures, one hundred sixty five thousand. This is our JPA assessment and it will see a true up of sixty two thousand for equity reserve contribution. Uh, there are currently enough reserves in the workers compensation fund for this uh reduction in allocation uh to the general fund. Um, the general liability fund currently tracks our liability. Yes, sir.
I'm going to ask the same question. What's the what's the balance in the in the workers comp fund right now and or as of the end of the fiscal year, if you if you've already?
It's current, it's projected about one point seven million. And we have about, uh, there's enough reserves in there for about two and a half, almost three years of of uh allocations of reserve requirements and assessments, and we maintain about a million for uh within our JPA. About one point seven, one millions retained for our insurance.
Is that in our bank account or in the JPAs?
It's in our bank.
And and how many open claims do we have?
Uh, we have about thirteen thirteen or.
We have thirteen workers comp open comp claims right now?
Correct.
How many employees do we?
That sounds a little high.
Well, it sounds ridiculously high, but.
We had thirteen, I'm sorry, last year we have nine, but the open up, open up, open open claims that we currently have, these are existing claims that from prior years.
Maybe I should have rephrased it. How many active, I mean, claims that they may stay open for years because you don't know when they come back to haunt you.
So one person can have more than one claim.
Well, I understand that, but also the the you're not, you don't typically close out the claim just because you quit paying the guy that week and he came back to work because he next week he says, you know, he has a different problem. So how many are active claims where we're 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 making payments right now? That's a better measure of how bad off we are.
I'm looking for that. I'll I'll let you know in a second.
Okay.
And and just to be clear on the question is, how many people are out of work and receiving compensation payments?
Basically, that's what I asked.
Is one, but that's that's coming to a close very soon. The actual open claims that we're paying on right now, I I think is around one.
Okay.
An active employee that's getting paid.
So I so other.
I'm happy.
So other payments could be, somebody's came back to work, but they're still going to see a doctor that we're paying for.
Right, okay.
Somebody who's permanent and stationary determination, but they're still getting the permanent and stationary determination payments as a part of the.
Okay, right, but to Bill's point, they could be back to work and we're still making payments for for.
Not in that scenario. They wouldn't be back to work. They'd still be out on disability. But they'd still be considered a town employee until they formally separate.
Now, you you can have somebody that gets hurt.
Right.
And goes in to see the doctor and then they'll say they're put on physical therapy, but doesn't mean that they can't come to work.
Totally understandable. Also, I mean, I'm sorry, George, if I'm overstepping, but the bulk of what our workers comp claims are going to come from our police department, and if they have an injury that prevents them from performing their job, our police department doesn't often have the ability to accommodate that type of arrangement, so we don't have a whole lot of modified duty assignments, depending on the type of injury that that person might have.
You you can't have a police officer on the street that isn't technically, physically able to perform the job. So there's no modified police officer duty.
Yeah, but he but to Bill's point, somebody could have had an injury where they are engaged in some kind of physical therapy or some other medical attention and they're fully capable and working.
Perfectly true.
Yeah, that could happen, yes.
Where they, you know, they 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 hurt their back and now they're doing a follow up MRI, okay? But they're back working. It doesn't mean that they have to sit at home while waiting for everything. I hope we're not doing that.
It it appears though we're in better shape than we've been for a long time. Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'll move on.
Uh, the general liability claims, I mean, fund uh is the claim administration expense for total liability employment practice and self retention, so estimated about three hundred and seventy thousand. Uh, the next fund, the employee benefits fund, this tracks our expenditures for various departments for employment, retirement, healthcare benefits, internal fund accounts for the pay as you go, retire, healthcare costs and for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three, that's five hundred and sixty six thousand. And there's an OPEB ARC allocation of sixty seven thousand in this um uh fund. Uh, staff is recommending that the we increase the employee benefits allocation charge of three percent to four percent for the PD and two percent to three percent for other departments. Um, this total increases about fifty nine thousand with forty three thousand of it being of PD. Uh, there's currently total compensated absences of nine hundred eighty two thousand. This includes what was included in the staff report. It's all um, leaves, vacation, holiday time. Um, that that's part of this total compensating absence is of the nine hundred eighty two thousand.
So is the reason for the increase of one percent uh for each category primarily because to compensate for time off that's due or is I hope it's not OPEB.
No, no, it's not for OPEB. No, it's 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 for the compensating absences. Correct, correct. Um, and we always true it up every year based off of um the current uh leave banks that they have um at the end of the fiscal year. So current fiscal year, it's nine hundred eighty two thousand that we have um in the employee benefit fund as compensated.
Why is there increased time off? I and just looking at the police department and I I haven't looked at the numbers, so I could be wrong, but my general impression is is that the average age in the department has come down over the last couple of years.
Well, a a lot of things factor into that percentage. It's uh as officers, you know, can't work on particular holidays or they're required to to work through holidays, we're required, they also get vacation, that goes on the books, we're required to fund that day, even though they haven't used that day yet, we're required to keep in our fund a balance for that day.
But that's not different from last year.
It's not different than last year, but salaries increase and then that amount changes.
Yeah, so if they haven't used their vacation for two years and now they're making ten percent more, then we have to, we have to up it by that ten percent because they may claim it now and we can't pay them and say, well, you only you earned it when you only make a hundred thousand. Sorry, you're making a hundred and ten now. But, you know, penalties go all the way around.
Correct.
Isn't that right, commander?
So that nine hundred eighty two thousand is is like the liquidated amount currently in the current fiscal year. It uh before we end the the fiscal year.
But we no longer, we no longer have the problem that we've had in the past.
Yeah.
Where there have been some staff that have accumulated hours in excess of our authorized caps.
So we ever use it or lose it po- policy?
We do have, uh, we do not have a use it or lose it. It's a payout policy for a certain percentage, yes.
And there's a cap. There's a cap of vacation accruals that that's certain.
But the result is a payoff, it's not lose it.
Correct, correct.
But my 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 only question about the is it's a fifty percent increase if it's going from what had been two to three.
Right.
To now being three to four, it's a fifty percent increase in salaries or, you know, I don't know, maybe over the three years.
So we had done ten.
I don't recall seeing this before. Have we, when was the last time we did this, Robert?
Uh, we've two years ago and we've only relit, we only increased it about a percent, one percent. And it's just a, it's a, it's a allocation based off of total weight, total salaries. It's a percentage off of that, so whatever the total salaries are, it's it's a percentage of four percent of total salaries by department. And that's the charge to the general fund that goes into the employment. Uh, the the next fund is the tennis fund. This is our fund that uh that we have player capital that uh that manages the tennis uh courts. Um, in here, we receive about forty thousand from this uh contract for them to manage, have exclusive uh management of the tennis courts and we get about eighteen thousand in uh tennis key fees. So the total um revenue is about the nine thousand um and against expenditures of one hundred and seventeen thousand in fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. This includes the contract maintenance, building security, but of this hundred and seventeen thousand, a hundred, a thousand of it is the rehabilitation for the remaining two courts and the clay court. Currently, right now, we're rehabilitating three courts um that will start, I think.
It's already started.
Already started, yeah, for the next six weeks, it'll be done. So next fiscal year, we're going to do the remaining two plus the key, the the clay tennis court. Yes, sir.
So if uh everything goes and we we end up approving, let's go ahead and take that tennis practice court, handball court, whenever you want to call it, and we say, let's turn that or something else into a pickleball court. That would be a separate fund that would just be part of the park CIP or since it's not really associated with tennis and tennis doesn't really want it. Would it come out of the tennis fund? I wouldn't think so because that the tennis people think that, you know, they don't want to have it there, you know, they don't want to have it, period.
But that's that's all true, but the tennis fund is technically general fund revenue.
Right.
Uh, so it can be used for anything in the general fund. We focus it on the tennis court.
Right.
So if we were to do a pickleball court funded separately, I'd suggest it come for the town's general fund.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I thought when somebody somebody asked me that and I I felt, well, well, it'd be difficult to take out the tennis fund when Dennis is arguing against it.
Yeah, but just for purpose of clarity, the discussion at the Park and Rec on this has assumed that those people that are advocating for pickleball will pay for this, not the town. And the counterpart from the tennis group is that they pay, that they've paid for it.
Well, I think that they would pay, yeah, I know, but they would pay, they would pay for it over time because they would, we would have to enclose it and they would have to buy a key.
Well, the analogy that has come at Park and Rec has been what happened with the play school. And so, I mean, there's no decision on, this is still being discussed.
Yeah, I understand.
I'm just saying, the discussion has been that if they were going to support it, people would have to come forward with the money to make it happen.
Well.
I'm just saying that's.
Whether or not the council agrees with that is a different story.
I'm just saying what.
Yeah, no, I understand. I've heard it from them as well, but however, Mr. Jessup, when 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 he asked me and I said, well, we put a, we we would want to have them use your scheduling thing and we would want to have them, you know, pay to get a key. And he says, oh, that'd be that'd be revenue for me, but this is off subject, so we should probably not discuss it anymore.
I have a question, though. Uh, in in the last paragraph under the tennis fund, it it says uh about the general court maintenance needs rehabilitation of two courts and the clay court maintenance is the hundred thousand, what's the hundred thousand dollars applied to?
That's for for the two courts and the clay clay court. That's the 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 hundred thousand for those. It's for the maintenance of, we're going to go out to bid, we're going to bid the project like we did with these current.
But we're doing the rehabilitation on these two courts that's totally separate from the clay court.
Yeah, uh, let let me interject. So similar to what we're doing right now with the resurfacing of the um back three courts, the front two courts need, I can say they're actually in worse shape, but because the equipment has to drive through, we didn't want to repair the front two first. So the work that's going on now is rehabbing the back three. Next fiscal year, we're asking for money through this to rehab the front two. That's where the majority of money is going to go. There is some general maintenance that needs to happen on the clay court. It's not a reconstruct, it's just maintenance work. Yeah, and so it's going to be done separately, but.
So that and how much is that? Is that?
I was going to say, we're asking for an aggregate of a hundred thousand to to deal with all three.
I think when we put in the clay court, the estimate was ten thousand dollars. That included water usage and blowing it off and adding adding stuff.
I mean, there's been some periodic things going on, but now that the courts, I think, are now what, almost four, three to four years old? I think we just need to make sure that we're paying the proper amount of attention to it.
Okay. Okay.
Even though it's not being used much.
No.
That concludes the portion for the internals, special service funds. Um, now we're getting to the real good stuff, so CIP.
Okay, um, I don't know how in depth you want me to go in terms of the CIP before you enter, you want to talk about specific projects and um, categories, but uh this year we have, I mean, our CIP uh provides a five, tries to provide a five year outlook, but what you're doing really is just approving money. When you approve the budget, it'll just be for the the. When you approve the budget, it'll just be for the the coming fiscal year. And so.
Yeah, if I could suggest, Robert and everybody. We kind of looked at the C I P before and we looked at the spreadsheet which you've included in the back. Perhaps we could go and look at the spreadsheet and you could talk about those items in those five category, in those five or six categories. That are actually in there, you know, on on the last page of the document, which was that spreadsheet. That several months ago, we've moved some money around and, you know, some of it's been repositioned due to. You know, you got to do engineering before you can do the work and things like that. So if if we just go through through that, you know, it's got the five million we've already paid, but now. Now we're looking at the next year, which was kind of pre-allocated. Some of it was George asked us for an okay, like the two point five million on drainage. But some of the other stuff he kind of pre-allocated based on what he thought.
Okay, I I I can certainly do that. And keep in mind that the, I mean, the capital improvement funds that we're talking about. Is a substantial chunk of what is funding the C I P. But there are other funds in the C I P which add to and expand some of those categories as well.
Whatever you want. I just was making.
So we're just a question. We were clear about where the funds to each of the other funds that we've addressed come from. It is a hundred percent of the capital improvement fund funding from the general plan?
No, and that's what I was getting at is that the C I P is made up of a variety of different funds. This year with the allocation that the council is planning to make, it makes a majority contribution. But we have about a hundred and forty five thousand dollars of measure W funds. Uh, we have about three hundred and seventy thousand of measure A funds. We have gas tax, measure M. And allocations from the Atherton Channel District as well.
So if you want to then go through the, I mean, you got the Rob Roberts book on page thirteen. So. That shows where all the money's coming from.
Yeah, so we have where the money's coming from, right here, in terms of revenue and expenditures. And as I indicated, about seventy five percent of the expenditures are planned out of the capital improvement fund.
If I could just interject, the the last section of the staff report is the policy focus section.
Yes, now he goes through and shows where the money comes from, some of it's been reallocated, that what how we're spending and it gets summarized.
The the policy focus section of the staff report, which begins on page. Seven of nine. Kind of focuses the council in on those big bucket projects that you talked about for that financial planning model.
But in in the capital improvement section of the staff report, under what's section three capital projects. It shows the funding source and one of the funding sources is capital improvements. Is that the general fund?
That is the general fund allocation into the capital improvement fund.
Okay, what, why is it called capital improvements instead of general fund when the others are called special parcel tax, measure A, measure M?
Because we are actually transferring money from the general fund into the capital improvement fund.
Go, go to the back, the spreadsheet data, page three.
There aren't numbers on.
In the first one, it shows like. Yeah, so page three, there's a beginning fund balance.
Yeah, I see that.
Forecasted of a million, three, seven, one.
Correct.
And then it shows where the rest of the money's coming from to get to the, to the revenue number shown earlier of four, nine, seven, five.
I see, and that's.
And then it shows where all the money's going out and still leaves us with two million bucks in that, in that. C I P account number four oh one at the end of the year forecasted. But what I don't see anywhere in here is the contribution from the parcel tax. Shouldn't we see a transfer in from the parcel tax fund in?
The parcel tax is on page one of that same table you're looking at, so.
Transportation is on page fourteen. I see it on page one.
Yes.
But I I don't see how it gets to the C I P expenditures anywhere. I can't find it. Well, maybe because I haven't taken enough time. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's all right.
That that would be in the C I P program booklet. It it highlights whatever master plan we're doing. Say if we're doing streets or roads or drainage.
Well, I think it's going to drainage if I remember correctly, but shouldn't I find a a a transfer here?
No, it doesn't get transferred. It goes to the project.
It's a draw. So the parcel tax fund, the measure A fund, those are all separate funds. And then you have the general fund, which transfers money into a capital improvement fund. And then.
So two hundred and forty five grand is gonna go straight to road maintenance and a hundred grand is going straight to drainage. No, no, they don't hit the C I P fund. Okay, I'm happy. Yeah, and the one in in the book, it says, you know, capital improvement program and it's got the fiscal year, streets and transportation. It shows. How much money we're spending. It's got parcel tax, measure A, measure M, then total of all.
Right, okay. So when the council went through the financial planning model, you identified some buckets to put the money in, and that's what Councilmember Widmer was stating we could go through. Those are basically itemized out on page seven of nine of the staff report in the policy focus. Those are those big bucket items. That the council was focused upon during the financial planning model. Instead of going through all the meticulous detail of the C I P projects, there's a lot of things that are like fifteen thousand for. You know, ADA improvements or or that sort of stuff. We don't need to really go through.
It's this page of seven of nine.
Seven of nine.
Way back here.
Yeah.
And so that's the policy focus area. We're hoping to get feedback from the council on this. Are we putting these things in the right buckets into the right projects?
And they're, and they're all totaled up on page seventeen of Robert's chart.
Okay, so if you want to go through those bucket projects or priorities.
The staff report.
In the staff report. So on page seven of nine, the priorities that we that we have heard from the council. You know, include roadway maintenance, park master plan improvements, bike and pet improvements, drainage, green infrastructure. And neighborhood traffic management. So we're looking for a little bit of direction in terms of. Where we heard priorities and just confirming them. So with regards to the bike and pedestrian master plan. The priority projects that we have listed are Selby Lane, getting the design started on that. With funding for construction in. And out fiscal, in the next fiscal year. The previous plans for, there was a previous project for putting in a. Improvements at the Selby El Camino intersection. Before it dovetails right into that project, but the current scope of the project doesn't include putting in a hawk beacon. Because that's going to be another project that costs several, I mean, that's several hundred thousand dollars to put that in. So some direction as to whether or not you want us to start including, if you want us to include that design. Understanding that that that's gonna add later on in terms of the dollar amounts to the overall project and require Caltrans approval. Whereas just doing the work on Selby is something that can be bifurcated.
Before you go.
Yeah.
Any further. Page seven of nine in the staff report talks about two hundred and fifty for Selby Lane and another hundred and seventy five for.
Yep.
Pedestrian, another hundred for class three, blah, blah, blah.
That's right.
That's not in the financial, the, under bike, bike pad in the, in the financial planning projection we did, there's two hundred grand in there.
That's one of the.
That that's one of the buckets. So the whole bike and ped program includes money from other buckets as well. And so if you go to page fifteen of the C I P book, it'll outline all the different funds that go into.
If I'd known we were gonna get into this, I would have done a lot more homework, so I'd have it on one piece of paper. Okay.
Okay, well, like I said, we can right now focus on the policy things prior, making sure that the priorities are are being hit. Is where we wanna, wanna go. So the priority on the bike pad is getting started on Selby Lane Bike Lane Project. Our class three bike, bike ways. We've been doing those in paint and a lot of the paint has faded, and so we'd like to do a refresh of that. And then one project that we would like to. Start implementing really is with the opening of the town center and the intersection here at Loiden and our driveway. Providing pedestrian access from Loiden Park, extending the sidewalk, providing a crosswalk, potentially a speed table. To get folks in and out of the town center, so we're asking for a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars to do that.
And I have a question. So would that pedestrian improvements be at where the stop sign is?
It would be, so the way that I envision it is we have on Loiden Drive, the sidewalk stops. We need to bring that around to Fair Oaks. Provide crossing improvements across Fair Oaks likely to where the station building is.
Oh, at the station.
Near where the station building and the driveway is.
Okay.
Not at the stop.
Not at this, not at the stop sign, but.
And the stop sign couldn't be there because that's in the middle of the turn. It's kind of a very difficult place.
Yeah, so I, that's things to be worked out in the design, but the, what we're getting is the need to put in some pedestrian improvements. Are you, yes, sir?
Yeah, if you put it closer to the tracks, you know, when somebody comes and pushes the button and it starts flashing, you have to stop. And people could be caught on the track. So I think that we really need to consider where we're going to put it so that everybody's safe. And that there's, you know, there's no way that we can have a problem where somebody has to stop on the tracks. And then we have the problem like they had down in Menlo Park, right? So just, my only caution when. It's like that could cause that problem.
So I I think that is an important thing to do, address. We're doing the town center. There is a difficult crossing. From Loiden Park and we know that there are going to be people walking from Loiden Park to the town center and we want to encourage that. So I think that is a good thing to do the design on and to address issues like Bill's raising. I'm much more interested in that than spending a hundred thousand dollars to improve the markings for the class three bike lanes. I don't know how we're gonna do that. I mean, we, we, as you know, we, we got some conflict from the very thick paint that we used previously. When we did those.
Yeah, so this wouldn't be like that. It would just be painted on, not the thermoblastic.
I mean, I think they're wearing out. I I recognize that. And since we have put those class three markings, especially on Atherton Avenue. It's been much more used by bicyclists than it had been previously. Which I think is a good thing.
Yeah.
It it it, in the long run, probably indicates a need to do more. But I think, I I think that the council was right in focusing first on Selby Lane. Diana?
Yeah, I I have the same. Can you guys hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I might, my internet's very unstable. I had the same thought when I read this as well. The hundred thousand to repaint those would not have been. As high up on my list. I think that the bike path on Selby Lane's important. I think the crosswalk near the train station is super important and I'm probably one of the lone people, but I also think the beacon. The Hawk Beacon at the, at El Camino and Selby Lane is, is a really important thing. To the people who live in the area and it's controversial, but I I think it's worth revisiting.
Caltrans has to approve that.
I I think it's timely to consider that at the time that we're doing the improvements on Selby Lane bike lanes. I mean, they've got, they've got a crossing guard there now. But isn't that a three jurisdiction intersection?
Yeah, it's a multi-jurisdiction intersection. All of them would need to be partners in that. And the concern is if we add the Hawk Beacon and that to the Selby project. You're gonna elongate the timeframe before you're actually gonna get something done on Selby. And so if Selby's.
We don't have to tie them together.
Right, right.
I mean, the other thing we should obviously do is make that a four-party agreement to include the fire district. On the Selby Lane Hawk Beacon. It's close enough to that. Fire station on Almond Roll. They're probably gonna want to override the light if there's a light there, just like they override the light at Almond Roll. And we'd like to have them participate in the costs on that.
Awesome idea.
But that would be separate from the.
From the work on Selby Lane. I think.
Yeah, if I, if I remember right, when we first asked for the Hawk Beacon after. Gentleman got killed here on the streets, you know, it took, it took about seven years before the Hawk Beacon showed up.
Yeah, but that's before we got any, that was the first Hawk Beacon. We now have three and they're much more prevalent. And and I think Caltrans is more amenable to them because they're all over.
I'm just, it's gonna take several years.
Including Redwood City has a couple, so.
Yeah, it'll, it'll add time, so we want to separate those two.
So might I make a suggestion that we have that as something that we work on this year, just developing partnership for that?
I think that's.
And then hopefully with that partnership, be able to fund design next year.
Next year.
Sounds good.
Twenty three, twenty four for, we use twenty two, twenty three to build the partnership and cobble together funds. And depending on how that pans out, either mid-year, later in the year. Uh, get that budget so that we can get started on design.
Encourage you to also go out for grants because it's a multi-jurisdictional issue and it's not just affluent. As seen by everyone. You know.
There, there's a lot going for potentially grant opportunities, particularly with the linkage to North Fair Oaks.
Yeah.
And the needs for access there.
Is getting a light there totally off the table? It's just the Hawk Beacon?
Yeah, the residents don't want it.
Yeah, the residents have been pretty firm about that.
Which, of course, I live there, so I'm on the other side and the people that are, that are with in my community. Feel, feel very strongly that it should be there. And what ends up happening is that because that isn't there. People go around through Redwood City to that light in Redwood City and Redwood City doesn't want our residents going into Redwood City. So they've put in the slow streets program right there to try to block that street so that you couldn't go to the light to turn left. You guys know what I'm talking about, that area?
Yeah, yeah, that that whole, that whole. Yeah, they all, the whole area and the residents en masse came to a council meeting a couple of years ago and said, we do not want a light. Now, maybe your neighbor, your direct neighbors have decided they want a light, but the majority of the residents at that time didn't want to have it. And and the residents in the, in the neighborhood streets didn't want to have it for cut-through traffic. I mean, we had a lot of people in the council chambers as one of our more robust meetings.
I wonder if that's still true, but but then, then how do we address the turning left on El Camino there? That's, and because that has a school down there, it's still a problem. So if people don't want to put a light there, which I think is a safety issue. Then they need to address people turning left onto El Camino there.
Well, the Hawk Beacon will help.
If I recall, the preliminary design that seemed to get the majority. Support included in extension of the medians to prevent left turns.
Yes.
From both sides of Selby onto El Camino, but retaining the ability to make the left turn from El Camino to the two sections of Selby. And so that I I think was the preferred alternative between the town, San Mateo County. And I believe Caltrans at the time. And then the addition of the Hawk Beacon would provide for the pedestrian, the need for pedestrian safety.
Yep.
I think that's a good solution. Can we move on to the drainage?
Yes, so drainage. The first item is taking a look and doing an assessment review of the Atherton Channel. West of Alameda de las Bulgas. West of Alameda de las Pulgas, basically going upstream towards two eighty. Um doing a full assessment of the condition of the channel. Um getting uh do it uh doing the design for any relining work. And repair work within the channel and um the associated environmental permitting. Uh we're looking at a total of putting four hundred thousand dollars towards that effort. Split between the Atherton Channel District and the Capital Improvement Fund. Three hundred thousand dollars towards green infrastructure, which includes not just the allocation from. The Capital Improvement Fund, but other funds. And with that, um we have a few ideas on where we would prioritize. Those um green infrastructure, in addition to that, that we would be required to do uh associated with. Roadway projects, the uh high priority areas that we're looking at is. Uh potentially using the fair, doing improvements at the Fair Oaks Loiden intersection. Kind of that dead corner. There are utilities there, but um potentially using that as a. Green infrastructure location and that would dovetail in with the pedestrian improvements that we talked about. Potentially on Polemas. Um and then there's also, I think, a couple of median islands um on Elena. And so those are kind of. Uh areas that we're looking at if there's opinions and things. Uh those were kind of outlined in our um. Green infrastructure plan. Yes, sir.
Yeah, um as we're looking at the channel. I, you know, as I've spoken to George a number of times. There are areas where it's a public easement and areas that it's just private property, right? Shared between two residents or shared or not even shared. It's all on one person's property. And that should not be the town's responsibility to pay for that. And so we need to, as part of the assessment, we need to find out specifically, is there an easement? That the town is responsible for on the titles of those properties? And if there's not. Then in fixing that, we need to assess those those residents who actually own the channel. Or share the channel ownership with their neighbors. And, you know, I brought that up several times since we did the the channel drainage master plan. You know, and we were presented with the large number and they just said, you know, here's how much it's gonna cost. But there was not the evaluation of whether or not it was really the town's responsibility to pay for that.
Okay, we'll have to include a right-of-way assessment with that.
I'm I'm all in favor of doing something, but I'm not in favor of if it's on private property using taxpayer dollars. And so, you know, I think that, you know, we should, we should be, you know, reassessing that.
You're saying if the channel goes through private property, it's their responsibility?
Yeah.
Uh unless we have an easement.
Uh well.
But I think we would have.
We we would have an easement through the primary areas of the channel, but there may be. Areas of the channel where, you know, makes a hard turn. And our easement goes that way as well. We'd have to do that right-of-way assessment that Robert was talking about. But there may be associated improvements, vegetation management, planting, things like that. Uh that help with erosion along a private slope. That would be the responsibility of that property owner, not the town.
Really?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
When you were talking about the these things that you're gonna build in the median, are they water filtration systems? What exactly would you build in this median? It wasn't clear what that actually is.
They're, they are essentially smaller scale distributed systems like our bioretention systems here around City Hall.
So is it in essence like a French drain sort of thing, an underground thing that puts the water back in the water table?
I say, we bring water in, it filters through um the um. You say the sand media, you have the plant roots that are supposed to help uh. Remove some of the pollutants from the from the water. And at certain locations, we have storm drains that we can put in under drains and connect to the drainage system and. And release the the cleaner storm water.
I I think that it.
It is a water filtration.
Yeah, if you were to look at Emily. Emily in Alejandra, next to Sacred Heart School, there's quite an extensive. Uh green infrastructure project that does exactly what you're saying, and there's an enormous amount of criticism of it.
Aren't we required by our to do these green infrastructure things, like for example?
When we improve the roads.
So with the Selby Lane Bike Lane would trigger one of those, right?
Yes.
Probably. But I, but why uh Polemas and Elena? We're not doing work on those roads.
No, I say we have in our drainage, in our green infrastructure master plan, kind of the prioritized um. Projects for implementation. Um there is uh the reasons for doing them. Away from the road or from your road projects are are twofold. There's been a push by the regional board to. Do what they call early implementation and try and get some of this infrastructure in place. You can use some of these projects to offset other road projects where you may not necessarily be able to fit. Something in. And it also helps with some some with general stormwater management as well. These were prioritized in the master plan, basically because they're a little easier to implement. The space is there. Um there's a an inlet nearby that we can connect to. Um but there's also a requirement uh coming down the line in our. Uh redo of the municipal regional stormwater permit. That is looking at region-wide targets on implementation of green infrastructure that trickle their way down to locals.
It's a mandate.
Well, for my two cents, I I'm interested in doing the green infrastructure project at. Oh, Fair Oaks and Loiden Drive. That makes sense. I mean, we're gonna do work there. That that that's a really good location. It's right across the street from the green infrastructure that they've got in front of City Hall. I'm not particularly interested in doing anything on Elena or Polemas. There's an enormous amount of building going on on Polemas right now. I'd like to see. Uh there's one homeowner that owns like seven properties on Polemas and is completely rebuilding the whole area. He had to do the whole green infrastructure on Polemas. I mean, he's ripping up the whole place.
There is, and we are also, if you recall, looking at a traffic signal as part of the Alameda de las Pulgas. Safety corridor.
We're looking at what kind of a signal?
A traffic signal at Atherton Avenue and Alameda de las Pulgas.
That that and issues grant is funding.
That's correct. So as part of that.
There might be something done up there. That would make sense to me.
We we intend to as part of that project and we're gonna be, the plan is to take out the um. Por Shop Island and Free Right Turn, so that's gonna generate um some space for. Putting in these types of improvements there.
That that makes sense to me, but jumping into Elena and Polemas, I mean, I'd like to see the. Work and there's a lot of work being done on Polemas right now.
There's also the Middlefield Road project.
Yeah, that's the pilot that we're moving forward with right now.
Yeah, so you'll see that project, what what it looks like for Councilman Brock and Ben Rollian. Uh all along Middlefield, we're at, remember?
Yeah, so we have, I mean, we have a pilot project funded in this current fiscal year. It's currently under design. So on the west side of Middlefield. South of Marsh. Um we have depressed inlets.
Between Marsh and Watkins?
Yes. So we have some depressed inlets there, so we're looking, what we're in the process of designing now. Are some green infrastructure improvements to take in some of the water off of Middlefield on that side. Um and. Implement the green infrastructure along that side. Yes, sir.
So you'll see that.
So um I mentioned earlier, there are these places that are flooded when it's sunshiny.
Where there's signs up.
Yeah, the signs are up, but yeah, yeah. And so. And occasionally they get flooded and occasionally they don't. And I understand the reason for it, okay? I understand that. Another jurisdiction blocked the drainage that was there, but. As one of the things we should be looking at with some of this money is what can we do as opposed to just buy flooded signs? And so this has been something I've brought up for years, okay, like ten.
We've actually looked at it, if you recall, when we were doing the carton field.
Yeah, yeah, we were gonna bring the water back to the to the channel and run it through there, but there there's Middlefield and there's. Off of uh, you know, Selby Lane, Stockbridge, those areas where you've had residents even come to the meeting. And talk about how they've been flooded, et cetera, et cetera. So um, you know, there's some. Other other than to say, yeah, we can't do it, or somebody else blocked us off. Uh you know, I think we should say, well, what can we do? That might improve it. Maybe some green infrastructure, I don't know. And, you know, maybe down in front of the high school where it floods. Maybe that's an area to put some green infrastructure. So I mean, I appreciate what you're doing everywhere else, but I do think that there are. There are some areas that really. You you know, our signs and people joke about it all the time and and but then at the same time, they say. But when are you gonna really do something? And I think that that's something, we wanna do some things that are. Visible, just like when we did the bike lane on Middlefield Road, okay? Well, we waited and we had a lot of funding for doing it and stuff like that. But that was something that the residents took notice of and said, there's my tax dollars at work, okay? And and I think that we need to do some of that. So anyway, I just wanna put that out and maybe we.
I agree with you, Bill, and I have a question. Is it possible? Does the green infrastructure stuff that we put in, would it help with that kind of flooding that we have?
Well, it might.
Theoretically.
So if we're.
The purpose.
I guess the water needs somewhere to go. And so without an outlet for it to connect to some sort of drainage system. It'll allow for some percolation really on low storms. And it may um reduce the level of ponding after things have dissipated, but it's not gonna alleviate. The the major flooding unless there's an actual drain for it to connect to.
But but Robert, why, what? What we ask our residents to do is to size how much water is gonna be run off. And put a retention pond in or retention sit well in. That will at least accommodate seventy percent or seventy-five percent of that. I forget the exact number. Why can't the town do that as well?
We can try and put in some rock galleries and other things, but ultimately, when you have your resident. Put in, when a resident puts in or a builder puts in a detention system, it's got a pump system to relieve it. In advance, you know, after a a storm comes, they hold the water, they dissipate it out. Where they dump it is the street. Um and so even if we were to hold water, we have to have someplace for it to go.
If it was, if it was a big enough well, and it was a dry well, and then it had the sand and the gravel at the bottom. A certain amount of it would be retained until it percolated down. And there are, if you look at the last round of storms we've had, it rained and then it didn't rain for two hours. Then it rained again. And so it went down and then, you know, filled back up and went down. So it would be of help. I mean, that that's the thing. It would be of help. I'm not saying. Maybe it won't cure it, but but all I'm asking for is some of the. Funding to go into looking into that. That would certainly be a positive step, I think.
We're certainly not gonna design it here this this evening, but if the council wants, when we bring the CIP back for approval, we can add. A dollar figure in there to engage a consultant, to go out and do some analysis to find out what we can or can't do. To solve those problem areas, Middlefield Road, uh Selby, Tuscaloosa, Stockbridge, wherever they all flood along El Camino. Well, I mean, we know what some of the big answer is gonna be. There's nowhere for it to go.
I think it makes no sense to do that for multiple areas. Bill specifically talking about on El Camino. At Almond Roll and Stockbridge, which is where we put signs up every year before it, months before it's raining.
I was gonna say, we can put something down for looking at those localized areas. The other thing to be cognizant of, obviously, is the Caltrans right-of-way. And so we're gonna have some limitation on what we can do on our own without having to deal with the state.
I I know Bob's got a question also, but just on this, I think if we're gonna do that. In the center of that assessment has to be opening up the drain. Which means a discussion with Redwood City. I I think it's Redwood City that shut it down, not the county.
Yeah, that's our understanding too.
We we've talked about that for a long, long time. And to my knowledge, we really haven't ever done anything about it.
It 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 is, um it's Redwood City and the county. They they they. As the water goes in that northerly direction, it it cuts over into that. County neighborhood. So it's Redwood City for a port portion of it and then the county for the other. We were actually flooding. Those homes over there and that's why.
Wait, with, but this is the drain, so you, what you're saying is there was a drain that went down. Went uh north on El Camino, under under the street and then came up and just. And emptied the water on the street? It didn't connect to a drainage system?
I don't know how it worked, only that that's what they told us was occurring and that's why they ended up blocking that particular drainage structure. But but you're right, any analysis needs to encompass where is that water gonna go?
And yeah, which is, I mean, that whole analysis addresses Robert's exact point. You have to have some, I mean, dry wells maybe would help, whether it's cost-effective, I don't know. We should do the analysis. But you gotta have a drain, I think, at the end of the day and we had it, we have a drain. It's just blocked.
Yeah, and and dry wells may only accommodate a twenty-five-year storm or a fifty-year storm, but.
Right.
Do have that hundred-year storm, it's gonna flood without somewhere to go.
But that's most of the storms. Uh it's my point. I mean, Bill's point is visible and needed. If we don't have to put up the friggin cones and signs and stuff several times a year, we don't have to do it once every fifty years? I I I I know that. And I and I assume, by the way, that. That I put a lot of faith in staff. I presume that staff, for example. Polemas got woven in here, even though I don't think. Other than all the construction that's going on, I don't think it included. Stuff that we were already doing that would trigger possibly green infrastructure like like. Uh crosswalks at Loiden, et cetera. There've been, there've been drainage problems that you couldn't pull him as. Right, so I assume. Got solved this year, but.
Well, there is a drainage erosion issue alongside of the road. Uh near the vineyard, uh that's right on that corner, that the property owner's been trying to get the town to fix. Because it is in the town's right-of-way. We've pushed back on the property owner, said you need to repair it, but. There's a relationship with that property owner that uh we're trying to help mitigate as well.
Uh I I understand. My point is, I presume you don't put something in here to do unless it's A, a problem. And B, you have a solution. You don't do it just because we need it, we have a quota of green infrastructure projects.
I can I ask a question following up on what you just said? How did we get the ones that were proposed? Are they? I guess I'm following what he was just saying is I'd like to see them prioritized by need. So if we have to solve our green infrastructure, if some of these key places are aided. By doing green infrastructure there, maybe we should do it there instead of some of the sites that have been proposed. Like how, why were those picked?
Okay, so I'll try and answer both questions. So we have a green infrastructure master plan that was developed. Um and in it. It. Put things in an order of easier to harder. And so there are certain areas that are easier to implement just because of the existing infrastructure, the layout of the land, et cetera. And so versus, there are, there are a lot of problem areas. But a lot of those problem areas have to do with the fact that there is no drainage system nearby. And so if we put in a piece of green infrastructure, we wanna collect the water, we wanna treat it, we wanna release it. There are areas such as. There are areas such as at Fair Oaks and Lloyd and where we have a large area that can be utilized to implement green infrastructure, and there's a storm drain inlet right there.
So that's both easier, it's visible, uh and it's do, it's.
It's doable.
And effective.
I I understand.
And there and there's a lot of benefits to getting it done and particularly getting it done there because there ancillary benefits do. It's right across from the town center. It's it's been neglected for a great period of time. Um and so kind of along that same course, I'll I'll point at the the piece of Poelhemus near Alameda de Las Pogas. There's a large stretch of area that is underutilized. It gets run over by a lot of construction trucks, causes a variety of issues, and that area can be repurposed to implement green infrastructure. There's a drain right there at the corner that would be utilized to relieve that water as well. Um and so.
Okay, I I I get it, but.
I'll contradict that. I'd love to do something on El Camino. But that would lar- likely be done as a larger-scale project that builds drainage infrastructure.
So so what I I get the, I get you got a long list, you do the, doing the easier ones. And to Bill's point, it seems like we're ignoring some of the hard ones, and and do we even have a list of the hard ones? You probably have it in your head. I haven't seen it, but.
No, we we in our drainage master plan, it lists a whole bunch of things, and we all know the ongoing issues with El Camino. It's not a secret.
So I think we should be studying that, prioritizing it.
Put money down to study El Camino and try and figure out some solutions to alleviate at least some of the nuisance flooding.
I think we should do that rather than Elena and Poelhemus, and and we should do the Atherton Avenue and Alameda intersection since we're gonna, we're gonna do work there.
In that other project. So, okay.
Yeah, I I agree that you should prioritize some of the the bad ones, that the one on Stockbridge, those people have sandbags. They have to put sandbags. It's it's really unsightly, and it's been like that forever. So, yeah, I would I love to, I I agree with taking the ones that are easier, doable, but there's a handful of ones that are real problematic that we should uh even if they're hard, we should consider them.
Okay, so we'll we'll reallocate some money towards El Camino.
So we're we're almost done with time, and the last item that staff has recommended deals with Watkins.
Yeah, so this is something that we've talked about in the past. We have that chain link fence that runs along Watkins. We've talked about replacing it. Um and so we have some money allocated in the budget to do that, but it is solely addressing that fence. There's been some other talk about uh potentially redoing the walkway.
Why why would redoing the walkway necessitate um modifications to the channel? That walkway is.
Is very narrow.
Yeah, it is.
And so if we were thinking about widening it to make it more accommodative to uh and easier to use. So right now, I think it's roughly about four feet or so wide. Um and so ideally, you want it a little wider, if you wanted to make it a mixed-use trail, it's gotta be a lot wider than that. Um and all of that impacts the, if we expanded it, if we expand that walkway at all, it would be on the channel side because there's really not much room on the roadside. Um and so that's why.
So let 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 me ask you a question about that, because I mean, one obvious issue as well is there an ADA issue if we're going in there, because right now it's not ADA compliant. I'm sure it's not wide enough for a wheelchair. But in reality, do we need, do we need that walkway? Given that we have a bridge going into the park, and the only purpose of that walkway is to get to the park, because it ends at the entrance to the park.
I I mentioned that to George the other day.
So do we need that right, right now? We we have a curb right next to it. Do we need it at all? I I.
I'd like to see the curb taken out. As a bike rider, that curb is dangerous. It's very dangerous. And if you're gonna go in the park or whatever, you walkway cut cut over into the park and move down and then come back out with all the other improvements.
It is, is Watkins a class three bike lane?
Watkins is a class. Class three.
So one option would be to take the curb out and actually to create, you don't have to formally create a bike lane there, but it'd just make more room for a bike if you repaved it.
Yeah, so right now, it is marked as a class three. In our master plan, you have the greenway improvements that go all the way from, call it Bay Road, all the way up where we're talking about capping the the channel along Marsh. It comes across and then it goes up Watkins. So.
But but it's not a class two, or is it?
No, it's a multi, multi.
So it's still class three bike lane?
No, I the I think closer to class one is what the vision is.
You know, it doesn't make any sense that you'd go down from Marsh and then you'd get on Watkins. Because Watkins dead ends into El Camino. It would make more sense that you'd go down Fair Oaks all the way out to the Alameda on on Atherton Ave, or you'd go down like the bike groups do and come down Glenwood Avenue and shoot down Valparaiso to the Alameda. That's how those guys ride. They don't go down Watkins. Because Watkins dead ends.
So but hi- his comment is that's just the what the ped bike plan, master plan says. But but I think maybe an intelligent solution to the pedestrian walkway on Watkins is to take out the curb and essentially to widen the street, which really widens where a bike could go. It makes it much more friendly for bikes.
Is for pedestrians.
You don't need one. You don't need a, that's the point. You don't need a place for pedestrians because they can cross the bridge into the park. The only. But okay, but oh, but the park's only open during the day, and the only purpose of the walkway on Watkins is to get in the park. Yeah, it's the only purpose. It doesn't go past the park entrance.
It goes, well, it goes all the way from Middlefield.
It goes all the way, there's a, there's a curb all the way to Middlefield?
Yeah, there's a, there's a pathway, the entire stretch from Middlefield across the, basically across the tracks. And you have the the Watkins, I'm sorry, you have the Watkins Crossing that has a sidewalk, it's got ramp, and it comes across basically almost to Dinkelspiel.
Yeah.
And envisioned is it basically extension all the way up to El Camino.
Yeah, but there's not a crosswalk there coming across. It's it's a dangerous, it's a.
Tracks.
Yeah.
Um well, there will be across when they put in the quad.
Yeah, but there's not one now. But.
There's a crosswalk.
So it's it's further up and it's even past the bridge.
Yeah, so I I said, there's crossings of Watkins. What I'm talking about is along Watkins.
Yeah.
All the way from Middlefield.
Goes all the way to Middlefield.
All the way from Middlefield, basically the station lane, you have a pedestrian path.
I thought it was a grass, grass after that, but okay, it may be, I don't walk it, I just ride it.
And so I don't think we want to take away pedestrian access along that road. If anything, we'd want to enhance it, but that's
Can I ask a quick question?
So and you're saying the only way to enhance it is to make a channel change.
Oh, you say.
You could take some right of way on the other side of the street and widen, move it up.
There's not that much room on the other side.
Well, is that, is that because they built out, or is it because that's really, that's past the they don't, there is no right of way over there?
There's no right of way.
Pretty tight.
Yeah, I mean, so you'll see.
Can we cover the?
Uh park, the fence is like, I think, three feet from, in a lot of spots, three feet from the edge of the road, and some of them have vegetation in front of that, too.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Is it possible, and is it just financially not feasible, but if we were to cover the the canal right there, we wouldn't even need a fence anymore? And then you would have a bike path and a big pedestrian thing all by just covering that?
That's a million. We're several million dollars short on that one.
Yeah, okay, so it's just prohibitive financially to do that.
At this moment, I I say, it what we had budgeted in here really is just replacing the fences.
I hear you.
Con- cognizant of, do we want to implement anything else, or we could just focus on putting in that fence? And making it more aesthetically pleasing than the uh, to let, say, the uh the old chain link that is uh deteriorating.
Well, the park is, the park should have a better-looking fence. That does terrible, you know, I think fences have been there for a long time. But I I do think that we should consider maybe letting people walk through the park at night. I realize there's a problem with then if they walk the park, then they stay in the park or they camp out, which has, we've had problems like that, but I think that we should look into that because um you know, I don't want to cover the channel. I don't want to go through the expense. We already just did a
I'm gonna cover.
Marsh Road Channel, and we know what it's gonna cost to to put in to to make modifications to that channel. And once you do that, then you might as well go redo the whole channel, and then that's gonna be about five million dollars, three to five million dollars, and we just don't have that.
I think.
Watkins is one of the roads that's at the least quality in the CIP.
Yeah, yeah, we're paving that this year.
So that that raises, and and is that a slurry?
No, we're doing the uh
Right.
The grinding over.
That's what we were talking about.
Yeah, so.
So if you're gonna do something to that curb and that path, should be all be done at the same time.
That's right, that's.
Can we narrow the car area?
It's pretty narrow as it is now.
Well, I don't know. I know there's a certain size, but you know, I mean, what that's, part of the problem on Watkins is the speeding. That's why we have two or three speed signs there. But you know, police have always said, if you narrow the 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 road, people will drive slower.
So why don't we look at that? And and from your prior comments, I understand we couldn't add a foot on the other side.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think the question is that we're doing the road. If we're gonna do anything with that pedestrian walkway, now's the time to do it.
Yeah.
Since we're doing the road. I don't know if we do anything with it. Maybe we just decide not to do anything with it, but it, but we should assess it.
Well, I'd like to see that hump taken out or that hump turned into a a less of a straight-up hump, because if you get pushed over by a car and you have to try and get out of your way, and you hit that hump, you're going over.
It's a very unfriendly hump. I agree with that.
And the road's too narrow to ride on the road anyway. I ride down the by, the the walking path.
Yeah.
When I'm over there.
Yeah. Okay, I I don't know, is Park and Rec meeting in here, George? Okay. Oh, six thirty. Oh, okay, so we don't have a time problem.
Anytime we go past two hours, we have a time problem.
Okay, I take that as a motion to adjourn.
Um since it's a joint meeting, we should actually adjourn both the, both the meetings and then just reflect for the record that we didn't have public comment because there were no members of the public present.
Right, yes, I asked for public comment and recognized no one present, but so we will be uh adjourning both the council meeting and the channel district board meeting.
Okay.
Okay, and Bob has made a motion, which has been accepted.
A second.